And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening to close meeting will heard discussed or considered by New Cano County School Board.
Thank you very much. Do I hear a motion to approve the certification of the closed session?
I move we approve the certification of the closed session.
Do I hear a second?
I have a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Good evening, we are going to move into new business. Mrs. Pitts, the first item is on the insurance health plan premium holiday recommendation.
All right, thank you, Madam Board Chair and members of the board. Tonight I'm bringing forward a recommendation that Dr. Nichols has been kind of excited about and so have I, and Haney Moore Times also participated in the meeting. We met with our insurance broker, Matt Davis, last week and did our overview regarding just the year-to-year claims, looking at a rolling claims method and also looking at the year-to-date method. And in terms of looking at where we were with our performance with our health insurance plan, our medical claims were down 5.98 percent. We were very excited about that, we felt like we were running well. We did have, of course, you know, several months where we knew that our employees were not going to the doctors, and so we expected a little bit of an uptick in the fall, and we did see that with our plan. That wasn't a surprise, it was just a matter of some of the doctor's offices, March, April, May, weren't seeing patients or they were pushing procedures and scheduling later. So that wasn't too big of a surprise, and we watched it from month to month, we'd receive a report each month. We were excited to see that our medical claims cost per employee, per member was at a decrease of 14.1 percent, so we're excited about that. And we did receive a surplus last year from our self-funded account, and we'd like to apply that, it's in terms of $200,631.46, and that was due to just really being good stewards of the plan and their healthcare. Our employees are very sharp in terms of ensuring that they're going to physicians or facilities that are within our plan for the most part, and I feel like they are really trying to keep the cost down, yet also a good balance in their wellness and their health. If we were to move forward this evening with the recommendation to give a holiday premium, we looked at what would that cost for the medical and the dental, and we look back at the October premiums for the employee only, and this holiday would be then our employees would not have their medical premium deductions on either check in December or their dental premiums, so it would be both pays. So the cost of that would be based on the October numbers, and it always goes with the performance of the plan with the employees that are actively in the plans at that time. We looked at October and the cost for that was about $114,720.16, so as you can see, that is quite a bit under what our surplus was last year. We also had a $23,000 surplus, a little bit over that, in dental. So when we look at that, we feel very good about the performance of the plan, and this would be one of our retention strategies for our employees that are participating on the plans. Of course, if they're not participating on the plans, then, you know, we have other ideas that we'd like to bring before you next month, too, as well, with those ideas. But this would be a huge savings for our employees, and right around the holidays, we thought that would be an awesome way to tell them thank you. We know the fall has been trying in a lot of ways, and it would give them something to look forward to if the board should approve this recommendation tonight.
This will come before you as an action item later on in the agenda.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item is Morhan, we're going to talk about CARES Act, set aside.
Ms. Ann, I'm Chair of Board Members. This is just a very small adjustment to the last time we brought the CARE Act and CRF funding for appropriation. They sent out an updated TIPS memo with some changes for all divisions, and so this is just formally to get those dollars on the books, an adjustment going down $356 for the cleaning supply set side account and $1,001.51 trending up for the facilities upgrade, so just a difference of $795.
We don't have an explanation on it why. It happened across the Commonwealth to almost every school division, so it's a recalculation on their side, moving money in those pieces, so net $700-plus dollars.
Okay, how many questions?
On that last, well, we talked about the last time with the CARES Act funding, how did we fare when it came to those dates that we had to spend that money by? Remember, remember we had those conversations and how we were under pressure that some of that money had to be spent by the end of the year, basically?
So this money specifically is the money that's not due to be spent until '22.
Okay.
So there are other pots of money, specifically the last round of CRF funds that we received that do have to be spent by December 31st, that's, or December 30th.
The only relief we have currently is they have allowed us now to pay an invoice into the first part of January, so it's just a little bit of relief to be able to sure that we receive things by the 30th, but now we actually have a payment for them in early January, but we still have to ensure that we have all of that kind of wrapped up by December 30th. So we've been working through that with everybody to come up with ideas, and we're moving a lot of things that were purchased previously into those funds and shifting and something different projects, so we're working through that. No relief yet.
And we'll be able to bring an update on that at the December 14 meeting. We should have all that lined up and in place, been very resourceful, able to move a lot of projects ahead, and then, as Ms. Morhan said, paid for some things that we had already purchased.
Any questions about that? Okay, so we'll move into CIP transfer requests.
Yes, ma'am, this is a basin pond repair. You all might remember previously you approved the $8,002.18 for the number to repair the basin pond behind the high school. This is specifically just additional work that Tim has had to do up until this point, also just a $5,000 reserve for him to report any other additional work that he'll need. We're not saying that this is a completion of that project, just want to make sure that we're keeping all up to date as to where he is.
And we've received, we've all gotten a tremendous amount of rain since this project has been completed, and the basin is really holding up and doing exactly what it should do. So very fortunate to get it done that quickly, just a testament to Tim and the team for making that happen. But another example of our set aside and the reserves that we have, you know, that's over $100,000 we've got to put into this project that was an anticipated cost, but being fiscally responsible, we have that to pull from. Not sure why Ms. Morhan is leaving.
Wait a minute.
They want to be on standby, Ms. Morhan.
I think he wants you on standby.
It does have my name associated with it.
That's right, old business FY22 recommended CIP.
Yeah, so.
I have those.
What's that?
Which one?
CIP.
At our last work session, we talked through the capital improvement plan and what our request would be for the county. We've since met with the county on a couple of occasions, and we want to come back and talk to you about what we'd like to request, and this is an action item for you this evening to move this process forward. Here we go. So this is our request for FY22, it's a digital conversion, this has to do with the one-to-one initiative, it's in the CIP each year. School buses, so I believe that is six school buses. Right, Haney?
Yeah.
HVAC replacement, continue replacing the units at the middle school. We have a HVAC replacement at George Watkins. We talked about CRF funds and funds to be spent by December 31st. We were going to try to do a significant amount of HVAC work there, but to get the HVAC equipment in, get it paid for, installed, so we keep running into that with those funds, but more long-term, we're going to continue working on the HVAC piece. General roof maintenance, painting, we talked a little bit last time at our work session about non-buses, so the need to purchase school vehicles. We get vehicles from the county, the sheriff's office the past few years has converted to SUVs. Currently, through VDOE, we're not allowed to transport students in SUVs because of the role factor. Not sure, I still, I think it's a very safe vehicle as I drive SUV, however, it is the provision we've put in front of us now. Paving district-wide is another $128,000, so total requested at county is at 1.18 there. One of the interesting things that the county has asked for as we're moving forward this elementary school is a new middle school number. While we're looking pretty far out with that, one of the things, Ms. Morhan, I've had a lot of conversation about is in doing these elementary project, a number kept being floated, I think it was like 28 million, how come it doesn't cost this much money? It's because that number was not inflated as we went through.
Escalated.
So at some point, what's that?
Escalated.
Escalated, there you go. So what we've done is for the county to say, here's what a 1,000-student, 140,000-square foot, at $305 a square foot, what would that cost now if we were to buy it now? And then we've escalated, inflated, escalated.
It's escalated.
Okay, we've escalated it by 5 percent, so it goes up pretty quickly. Right now it would be around 53 million if you built it today. Get to 2025, 2026, you're talking about 71 million, so a 5 percent escalation. But we want to show not just a single number, we wanted to show it each year. Working with Ms. Barber helped us and also mostly helped us with that, so you won't see that in this plan, but know that we're working through that with the county as well.
Mr. Hathaway is presenting this tonight to the planning group, and I believe his recommendation is for schools to receive the 1181, so we're hopeful for some positive outcome of this and that this will be what is, you know, approved in the CIP process.
But this does not have to be paid for until 2022.
1181, yeah.
2022.
Yep.
So I have a couple of questions. So the smaller, so 1.5 and 510 units are definitely small units, but it must be several of them at $100,000.
Yeah, so the school nutrition unit is actually the larger unit, so the past two years we've done the auditorium unit and then the unit that was in the cafeteria is going to need some additional work. Tim was saying that the, it basically will need to be designed because it can't fit a traditional or a new modern unit in the space that was, that had the older unit. But we did previously put in 35,000 a year, so every year in the CIP, and we've beat that up to 50,000. We looked at what would the total cost be if we just replaced every single unit in that school at once, and it, you know, it's over a million dollars. So we're just trying to tackle more a year, so really that carries forward here every year, but that's really one larger unit in there with three of the smaller units.
Okay. And then, so paving, is that typically like bus loops or higher traffic areas that we're targeting?
Yes, ma'am, in the current year, we have in the CIP money to do the high school bus loop, I believe Tim was looking at specifically here. The middle school is on the right-hand side of the school, that lot there, back behind the school and then back behind the high school by the fields, that lot back there. And then any other patch, especially at New Cano Elementary School on the backside where those buses come through, that lot back there.
I believe you had a little bit of sinkhole last year there, yeah.
But then there's other places where he can just do patching. I think the middle school loop is V-DOT, we've had that conversation, but all the other ones we kind of have to take care of. So that's what that is.
Any questions?
Does these school buses, are these designated for the new elementary school?
One is.
Okay.
We have five, and these now also include air, and they also include the cost of the radios that were previously provided, they were all purchased at one time. So now we're building that into the cost of the school bus. So we had purchased one, here's one, so we may look at getting another bus with year-end funding, potentially into next year, maybe do six in that final request. One of the things that we are looking at with the CRF funds is potentially getting a van now, if it's something that we can get by December 30th. There's a lot of trouble with buy off state contract, you're not going to get it by then, so it would have to be a separate year-end type thing, but we definitely couldn't get buses right now by December 30th if we tried to order one.
Next, old business, Dr. Nichols, the redistricting relaunch.
Yes, with the approval of the new elementary school and the funding associated with it, we were working on, and the Swiffrids are part of that committee, redistricting, and we had come to a good point with it, but we decided to pause it while we, as the new elementary school was paused, we paused this process as well. So we've been working with Cropper GIS, who's our consultant on this project, and now that we are moving forward with the new elementary school, we want to move forward with both the naming and redistricting. So what you have in front of you is both on the naming and the redistricting side of things, so you can see what we've done to present. We've had a number, we had a virtual public information session, we've had at least three committee meetings. So what we'd like to do moving forward is come back to committee on December 16th and remind the redistricting committee, here's what we decided, here are the two options. We don't want to go to a public information session in December, we think the timing of that would be off, but we do want to do it in January, so we have January 20th as a tentative date to do a virtual public information session, more information coming there. That's where the public will get to see those two options and be able to weigh in on those pieces. The 17th of February is another committee meeting, so now that the public has weighed in, where do we want to go, what recommendation do we want to bring to the board? Which has targeted March 1st as the school board presentation, so the first reading of that proposal, followed by the 15th of March being the second reading and a potential vote. So with the school opening, August of '22, we would have redistricting completed by March of '21, so families would have over a year to know if they were impacted by that change. So the delay of the school is actually made for a longer redistricting process and more time for families to adjust. So that's the proposal, although we don't need to vote on it, wanted to bring that forward with you and get any ideas or discussion around that. Naming as well, we relaunched the name submission portal, so there is a policy and a process that you have to follow with that, so we do have naming suggestions, we'd like to bring that for December 14th with the recommendation, so we'll be working through that piece. So top three names, somebody may ask, so I wanted to give you the up-to-date numbers. So in the third position is Bottoms Bridge Elementary School as a recommendation. Number two would be Martha Washington Elementary School, so if we were doing this American Idol style, Quentin Elementary School would be number one, so that's sort of your order there with the three names that have been put forward. So we'll continue to work on that piece and work with you and bring updates as well, but we wanted to give you an update on naming and an update on redistricting and have you weigh in, ask any questions, concerns, considerations.
Okay, we look forward to continuing on.
All right.
And then the last item under old business is our turn to learn.
Okay. So while the presentation is coming up, first grade began in-person today, kindergarten had their first full week last week, so both our principals here will give them opportunity to talk about how that's going and moving forward in just a minute. Before I get into the phased approach piece, on Friday, as you know, the governor did adapt his current order to have a limit to in-person gathering of 25 and a mask mandate from five up. Schools are not included in the gathering order, so we did get that clarification late Friday. For the most part, we stay under 25, our buses typically have less than 25, our classrooms have less than 25, our internet access areas are where you would have more than 25, but they are spaced. So we were in a good position even before, but to have that is helpful, so not governed by that piece. The mask mandate, we already had in place, so really that didn't create an issue for us either. The biggest thing moving forward is the crowds, so as we look forward to activities and athletic events and things like that, we will be severely limited with in-person attendance. So that's a quick update, I do have a meeting with state superintendent tomorrow to get more guidance on that piece. So we have a phased approach, if you'd back up one slide, sorry. So looking at our criteria, our regional and county health metrics, I receive those every Monday from the Virginia Department of Health. Staffing, do we have the staffing in place for student learning, students choosing in-class learning? We launched our survey for two through five on Friday, we have about 400 responses already. With that, it closes later this week, so if you are watching and you have not done that, please take that survey because it helps us with the in-person learning and designing that. And then the health of students and staff in our schools, are we having positive cases? Are we having quarantines? You know, are we able to keep in-person instruction in place? So none of that has changed, but just a reminder every time we come back to it. Cohort one has been in since the second week of school. Cohort two, as I mentioned, kindergarten register orientation was November 2nd through 6th, November 9th kindergarten returned in-person, and today, first grade returned to in-person instruction. So I don't know if either elementary principal wants to talk about how that's going? They're both deferring.
It's going well. You know, we've got 800 kids between both grade levels, about half the kids are being dropped off, half on the bus. It's going pretty smoothly. Teachers seem to be relaxed about it so far, and their initial trepidation seems to be gone once you got, and it's good having kids in the building, I mean, it's nice seeing the buses coming. We're finding, because we're eating in the rooms, there's a little bit of a logistical piece in the shortened day, getting kids down to lunch and getting them back to their room, and I can see as we go on in the grade levels, it's going to become a little more cumbersome to do that, but we'll figure it out. I guess that's about it.
Terrific start, it's amazing, kindergarten, the prior week, kindergarten orientation week was just a godsend for us. Actually, we'd like to say some of the things that we did during that week, we felt it gave the teachers more personal and one-to-one interaction with a single parent when they brought a child in. The parents have been terrific and very supportive, it was amazing that five-year-olds could get off the bus and when you asked them, who's your teacher? You know, I'm pretty sure they, and they knew who their teacher was, they knew pretty much where their classroom was, they did a remarkable job. And I think a lot of that goes to the credit of the planning that the teachers have done, the parapurs have been incredibly supportive, Merv has been supportive, bus drivers who provided support in the online access areas, our resource teachers have been great, cafeteria, the office staff. Our poor ladies get inundated with phone call all day long, questions that they really can't, you know, may not have the ability to answer, a lot of them are technology questions, so they've all been terrific. It's just having everybody just come together and pulled together, it's been really a good process, and I'm very impressed with first grade coming today. As Dr. Nichols was referring, I really want to encourage parents to complete those surveys. I heard from about three teachers today that told me that they were contacted by parents, and the parents said, well, we're going to wait to fill out that survey until we know if you're going to be the virtual teacher or not. And I said, no, no, that's exactly what we can't do. We really need that data in because that's what's going to drive our decisions. And I'll say, just at our school, we had 53 students in kindergarten and first grade that had to change their teacher, 53 in just two grade levels. And that's based on how many, you know, choose virtual and how many have to choose in-person, and those kids have to be moved around, and the parents were fantastic as far as supporting us in that. We see trends that are going to continue that way also, we really need the surveys to be completed because that's the data that's going to drive how we make those decisions. So as Dr. Nichols said, we really want to encourage that to get completed so we can get working on that.
I mean, we couldn't do this without their leadership and what they've been able to make happen at the building for us to, I remember sitting here talking about we're going to come back hybrid, and the board pushed back on that, and we met, and it's like, can we do four days? And they really have made that happen in their schools. But, I mean, they make it sound easy, but it's far from easy, the logistics connected with and all the work that they've done. One of the questions I get sometimes is, why are we not moving faster? Like, we could have brought K2 together, we could have brought three. I would venture to say, and they can jump in at any point, we've learned a ton of lessons from kindergarten this week, last week. We're learning even more lessons, I was at New Cano Elementary for dismissal today, and it's like, okay, now we have K1, nothing's the same. We can't put 70 kids on a bus, we can only put X number, and parent pickup is different, and so we're better because we're moving slower, I would say.
I would agree with that, also, you know, if both schools, it's about 50 percent, I believe, in our school, parent pickup was the buses, I think I said that. And so our parent pickup is going to, which is normally when we have all our children, about 125. Right now, with two grade levels in, we're running about 60, and so as we come back, if those numbers stay the same, we're going to have a huge parent pickup, parent drop off, so we're trying to figure out, Mr. Baum's working on redesigning our side parking lot so we can do this, just a little logistical things like that.
And Watkins just came, we have 54 pickups right now, just for those two grades, so we see that, it's going to be one of the challenges as we roll on and add more students.
And speaking of challenges, we have Mr. Hens with us as well, who's done a great job on the transportation side with the logistics. Mervin, I don't know if you want to add to some of the work and the work yet to be done and why it benefits us to take this approach.
Don't put me on the spot. If you're sitting there, be ready. Yeah, I would definitely say it's very important for parents to please make sure that they fill out the surveys. It's important for us to make sure that we get that information back so that we can figure out how many buses are actually needed. Right now, we're going into a situation where we have a couple buses that are at max capacity. So with some of the forms that we've gotten in, we have already started kind of creating new routes that will, you know, take place sometime starting next week, so it's very important to please make sure that we get those forms filled out, filled out completely. Of course, if there are any questions or concerns, please, you know, definitely go us a call at the transportation office and we can help answer any calls that anyone has.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Yeah, I just, you know, I want to say, I just thank you guys for persevering through that because I know it has been challenging from transportation to administration, and, you know, and I think the advantage of having a community like this and having people with you guys' experience, I don't know what we would do if we had first-year principals at the elementary school level at this stage of the game, I mean, that would just be overwhelming, but, and that's why I appreciate you guys so much and your people skills of, you know, helping your staff persevere through this as we make this transition back, and I guess one of the questions is, how has your Fridays worked out? How was that, what does that look like for you guys like last Friday? Was that just kind of like the whole regroup thing to reevaluate, or how did your teachers kind of deal with that as well?
Well, the teachers, the virtual ones, the same. For the in-person teachers, they're folding sort of office hours in the morning with parents, but also to do the deep cleaning, we both have figured out, they've got to have a little extra time in the afternoon, so the Friday allows us to get that done as well, for SSD to come in and do. So the Friday allows us to get that done as well for SSD to come in and do that.
It's just more team planning and just tweaking what, you know, those conversations. What's working, what we need to make some changes to. And I think that's just going to be part of the process that it comes to going on. Because the numbers, I think John is the same way. From, I think our kindergartens are looking at about 17, at least right now, 17 to 18, which is about all you can fit in there right now.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Our first hall, our first grade has 18. And I've been down to Watkins, but if you want to come, you know, just visit and look at, you know, first grade class, they're packed if we need. So, you know.
Well, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Some of the things that we're working on now internally is the schedule. So at what point do we move to multiple tiers for transportation? At what point do we lengthen the school day? All of those pieces are things that we're working through right now. So families, parents, if you're watching, I just thank you for being flexible. I know this isn't easy on the family side of things. None of this has been easy. I just appreciate everybody continuing to come to the table, work through the challenges and make the next best decision. So speaking of next best decision, we have two through five. We have a survey out for those families now. We have some proposed dates in front of you and I want to, we need to bold the word proposed because the board would have to take action on this. But we want to just kind of, since it's a work session, talk out loud about our thinking and have you push back, react to it and so forth. What we're looking at, and some of this involves logistics. So the survey closes on the 19th. Once we get that information, keep in mind that Thanksgiving break is mixed in there as well. It takes us a full two weeks to run the routes and the transportation piece and make sure we have enough drivers and buses and so forth. We're talking 22, 23, 24 kids on a bus and those pieces. So in conversations with our principals and with the division leadership team, we looked at the potential of bringing second and third grade back December 14th. That would be the earliest we could do that. Now, the question's going to be, you're bringing them back a week before they go home, right? We were leery about starting cohort three the day we come back from winter break. So we almost wanted to use December 14th that week as sort of an orientation week with your new teacher and kind of the structure and the schedule and those pieces. So when the winter break resumed or ended, kids would be off and running. We would have run the routes for a week. We would have had some of those logistical things taken care of. So that's why we have that on there and just wanted to explain that piece. Pending a successful second and third grade, now this is changing daily. So we got new guidance on Friday. I saw before I came in here that one of the largest school divisions in the state of Virginia has moved to an all-virtual format after starting. So none of this is set in stone. We're ready to pivot back if we need to at any point. We want to be ready for those pieces, but just forecasting and looking forward. That could make the way for fourth and fifth grade to be back around January 11th. We are looking at the four-day-a-week format at this point in time. So those are the cohorts that we have.
When we do that, would we run more bus routes?
We would likely, by the time we get to K5, have additional double routes at those different components. When we get to 612, so when we come all the way back, we would definitely be in multiple tiers and additional routes. There's just no way logistically to avoid that piece. And Mervin, jump in if I'm off base, but we've talked about it a few times. Right now, we're not doing that and we're able to pull this off. But as we bring more kids in and the constraints are still what they are, we will, transportation times will increase significantly.
So for grades K through five, what's, how many students would we allow on a bus?
It would still be the...
One per seat?
One per seat unless you're in the same family and then you can sit on the same bus. I did do an interview with Junior Beta, it was three seventh graders. And when I broke that news to them, they said, "Do I have to sit with my sibling?" Yes, you would actually have to sit with your sibling. That's the bad news, but that's the only time you go more than one to a seat. So, and that is pushing the limits of what we're allowed to do. When you get on our buses now, they have red Xs, you know, where you can sit, where you can't sit. We also can't sit in the first seat because that's within distance of the driver. So in case you have the quarantine and contact tracing, so we lose a lot on the buses. Our families have been great about the drop-off, which is wonderful. But it also creates another logistical issue with all the cars coming in around the same time.
We're currently trying to hire full-time and part-time bus drivers to assist Mr. Hens when he has to add additional routes. So we do...
We have a referral bonus for all employees. If you refer a CDL driver and they get hired, there is a $500 referral bonus for employees that refer. I believe that's still in effect.
And doesn't add any parents or community members with the CDL to drive a bus? We are hiring.
Yes.
So they can take advantage.
So the question regarding, hearing what the principals said about the fact that there were quite a few students who didn't get to keep their same teachers when they were virtual, right? Than when they came back from K1. Okay. So what's going to happen? Let's say hypothetically speaking, we start December 14th for grades two and three. That means they're going to be introduced to teachers that they didn't have before, right?
Right.
If we have issues, and this is just an if, if we have issues over the holidays and we get to January, hypothetically speaking, those kids could go back to virtual with their virtual teachers, which wouldn't be the teachers they would have been introduced to in December.
No, that's...
Yes, no, they, no. So if you trade, if we pivot back to virtual, let's say that happens. You go virtual with your current teacher. You do not make another change.
Okay, that's correct. And I think that, I mean, I think that's a question parents...
So that's why we're trying to...
Okay.
Yeah, so if you do a switch, we'd like it to be once.
Right.
Unless, for some reason, your family that comes in person, and let's just say there are strenuous circumstances and you need to go virtual again, just you, you may have a shift there. But if we all went back to virtual, you would keep that teacher because that teacher would be going virtual with you.
Right, okay, thank you. Yeah, that clarifies it.
And Mr. Matt gave the number of 53. They did a tremendous job to get it to that number. When you think of a couple hundred kids to have less than 25% or 25% when you know it has to happen, just a tremendous work that the assistant principals, the principals and the secretaries did to make that happen.
Great.
Okay.
Any other questions about...
So, well, so let me ask, just, so middle and high school, we can't overlap them with elementary because we're learning logistics about the elementary and then that overlays more complications.
Yes, and the, one of the most difficult parts with the middle school is the number, the scheduling and the number of teachers you would have to change to make that happen. And you would greatly increase the number of teachers that would be teaching concurrently, which is the new phrase for virtual and in-person at the same time, which is something we're trying to minimize. So we're really looking at start of second semester for those grades because for the high school, you're on a four-by-four, you have a new set of teachers anyway. So we would be able to schedule you virtually or in-person at that point. The middle school, same token, would be at the semester. So if we did have to shift teachers or shift, it would be at a natural breaking point. That's one of the biggest issues when it comes to secondary. I can't just move your first-grade teacher. I've got to move your chemistry teacher and your English teacher and your... And it just creates a logistical nightmare. Our secondary kids are doing better, not saying it is perfect, but better than our elementary students in the virtual environment. So that's kind of targeting and once again, working with our administrators and our counselors and our teachers on that.
So the TBD is really a TBD for the first semester, not the second? I mean, we're still kind of targeting for second semester, right? I mean...
Internally, working with both Kelly and Chris and the administrative teams, we're looking at the second semester. So in the next week or two, once this survey closes, we're going to go ahead and do a 612 survey for families to choose for second semester. So that's kind of, we want all our data and enough time that we can build a schedule, look at the staffing and all the metrics that we utilize to make that happen. It's a monumental undertaking, so we want to give them as much lead time as possible on that piece. So yes, that'll be coming probably right around Thanksgiving, if not right after, for 612 families. I was out of order with our principals talking about how schools have been going. But so you heard them speak. Here are some pictures from our K1. So you can see once again how classrooms are organized, what kids are doing, the bus piece and so forth. So done a tremendous job. I think by day three, our kindergarteners were independent, which was awesome. So we talked a lot about this, so I'll go through this pretty quickly. The grade two, five is your instructional model for the remainder of the year. Instead of saying till the end of the semester, the end of the semester, by the time we start, may only be four weeks. So really want you to look at what you would like it to be for the remainder of the school year, not knowing when the actual start will be. We hate to survey families now and then four weeks survey you again and have to make all of those, possibly switch teachers for a third time. The goal is to provide in-person learning four days a week. It's really dependent on space and staffing. We're mindful of class size. We're mindful of we have to be at least three feet. Mindful of all of those different components. We've talked a lot about student-teacher may change as a result of the choice. They work very hard to mitigate that, but it is a reality. Very fortunate to have a lot of wonderful teachers, so we're able to make that work. I mentioned the daily schedule. As more cohorts are added, we will come back to the table and look at expanded schedules. And transportation routes do change as cohorts are added. As we add buses, as we add routes, as we run out of room on a bus, those are changed. Speaking of lessons we learned, Mervin and his team with the first grade, sent a mailer home to first-grade families. The internet call center, which is made up mainly of our transportation folks, made phone calls to each family and then also a robocall as well. So making sure we're notifying them as we move forward. So updated timeline, survey closes on the 19th. Right now, we're targeted for a school board vote on cohort three only. But if you wanted to look at cohort four as well, we could, we could talk that through. December 14th, targeting for cohort three. And then December 14th, we'll be back at the next work session to talk about how cohorts, how the work is going and what our next steps are. So we took a meeting all from Return to Learn, but we're back at it and giving you an update. I couldn't be prouder of our kids, our families, our teachers, our staff, our administrators. Last week was a really good week and it was great to see the class of 2033 come through the door. Be happy to answer any questions or talk through any suggestions or shifts or things you'd like to see between now and November 30th. We will bring the survey results like we did last time. That's why we're not doing a vote tonight because we want you to see all of that data prior to a vote and update you on the health metrics when we do it.
I, one thing I'd like to say, I appreciate Mr. Mack making this comment, and that is surveys are used in order to make plans for us to know numbers, but it doesn't always mean that everybody who fills out a survey gets what they want.
Right.
Because it's really about numbers and it's what we're capable of doing with the numbers that the survey data gives us.
Yes.
I just, oftentimes I hear people go, "Well, I don't know why I have to fill out a survey because you don't do what I want anyway." Well, if it was just you, yeah, maybe, but it's a lot of other people. So the more we explain why we do what we do, the better it is. So any other questions at all?
You know, maybe middle school and high school can talk about how you think that your virtual experiences are going so far in terms of the feedback that you're getting from, from the students and the teachers.
Our teachers, again, that's really, this is a challenge. It's been amazing what they have been able to accomplish in such a short period of time. I don't want to go over here, but I've seen a lot of growth in the area of technology and effective usage. I've seen our teachers really build that community understanding as far as making sure that they're making connections with their students still, that they're building that sense of classroom community, whether it's simply by getting to all the students in our interest. I've had teachers give out surveys to students to kind of see how their classroom teaching's going, to make sure that the kids are feeling connected. I've had positive responses from parents. I really think, even though despite us having a physical distance, we've been able to build that, again, that community, that understanding that the students are part of the school. They're, even though they're not with us right now, that even our sixth graders have that kind of connection as far as that goes. And they feel, I think, I'm with my friend in the library, but they're feeling more empowered to be able to talk and to be able to communicate with their teachers, to be able to advocate for themselves. After teachers, funny too, like your teachers talk about how, wow, our kids really are on top of everything. Like, I've, you know, they've not even been three hours since the class. We're like, where's my graded assignment? Have you got everything in and everything completed yet? So I think it's really given our children that kind of avenue that they didn't have before. Where they, they are asking those questions. They are asking for support when they need it. They feel comfortable in the technology world, even when we don't feel very comfortable and our students rise to that challenge. So I see a lot of positivity. Yes, if you want to see our children in front of us. Yes, it is hard not having our students. But I think that everybody's kind of adapted at this point. I do see a lot of positivity with it as far as that goes. Hope that answers your question.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Some more at the high school, piggybacking off of what Ms. Grace said. We are just so thankful for the staff, the backend staff, our teachers. They have gone above and beyond every single day, particularly at the high school level. One thing that the administrative team has received feedback on throughout the course of the first essentially 11 weeks are the AM and PM office hours. So while our instructional schedule is a little different from the middle school, students are able to check in in the morning. They utilize that instructional time of the class and then also check back in for feedback, reflections, all of that after the class during the PM office hours. So I think that loop has been really beneficial for students and educators. Families even are checking in during those office hours as well. So it's really great to see a multi-tier kind of approach to communication and getting through that instructional piece. In addition, we've had teachers step up as the informal leaders within the building, really utilizing technology tools, teaching one another, reaching out to families, even of students that they don't necessarily teach with tech issues. Math team has been amazing at the high school with the technology helped us. We transfer calls there all the time and they've been very, very beneficial. So we really do appreciate at the secondary level, especially at the high school, taking a look at that to-be-determined date for return to learn as far as at the high school. We definitely want to see students within our building. We miss them incredibly so. But at that semester mark, it would be a really great pivot point in whatever direction that we go.
Thank you. One of my favorite stories, I don't think I've shared it at a board meeting. I grab and go with a parent, just talking, shockingly, just loving to talk to anybody who talks to me. But she said, "I'm amazed at how our teachers are still connecting." And she told me the story of how the teacher, through virtual teaching, noticed that her daughter wasn't feeling well and called the mom and said, "Something's not quite right." So mom took the child to the doctor. She wasn't feeling quite well and so... But threw a tic-tac-toe board in the screen with all these kids on it, noticed that this kid here was not herself. And it just showed the power of our teachers and no matter if it's a screen, they're still connecting with kids and noticing that this child does not feel quite well. I'm just, I love what our teachers do and I'm so proud of them and really making the best of the most difficult situation any of us have been in in education.
That's awesome. You know, one of the things we hadn't really talked about, and I guess this is a question of mine, is that, you know, it's amazing, even since school has started, I am amazed at how few complaints or emails that we have had on the lack of internet broadband. I thought after the first four weeks, my email would be overwhelmed with parents that said, "You know what? We can never get on." And I have, I've had a few, but when you look at the entire county going virtual, top... on top of all the other people who are already at home that are on the Internet system, I thought literally within the first four to six weeks, we would have a massive crash in the county with that many students being online. And I think that, and maybe Matt can speak to this, I, I think that when you look at a percentage of people, we haven't had the overwhelming shutdowns that we could have had based on the first time we've ever done that. Would you agree with that or...
Yeah, I mean, I've been, I've been really surprised that the riders, that the membership structures have stayed stable with the volume of folks that they weren't normally playing for. So I mean, I've been really surprised that there hasn't been more of those spotty outages than you had a couple that have sprung up, you know?
But you haven't had any massive outages that were...
No, no, it's been really stable. And from the call center, everything else, I haven't heard any vague issues with just that, that issue where it's, you know, this is the second week in a row that I haven't been able to connect. It might have been that it was one day that they had an issue. Everything worked the next day. So I've been other things without, without that.
Any other comments? Any comments on this? Okay. We're going to move towards action items. Board members, do I hear a motion to approve personnel matters as presented?
I move that we approve personnel matters as presented.
Do I hear a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed, motion carries. Do I hear a motion to approve the premium holiday as presented?
I move we approve the premium holiday as presented.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No one opposed, motion carries. Do I hear a motion to approve that CARES, it should be CARES Act, right? So the CARES Act set aside funding appropriation as presented.
I move we approve the CARES Act set aside funding appropriation as presented.
Okay, do I hear a second?
My second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
No one's opposed, motion carries. Do I hear a motion to approve the CIP transfer request as presented?
I made the motion that we approve the CIP transfer request as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no one opposed. Do I hear a motion to approve the recommended CIP as presented?
I move that we approve the recommended CIP as presented.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
No one's opposed, motion carries. That ends our work session for this evening.